Hello, welcome to the Legal Women Voters Conversation with the Candidates. Tonight's program is brought to you by the Legal Women Voters Houston's Public Education Fund, as well as a Houston media source. My name is Fran Watson, and we'll have my co-host Caroline Gary. And tonight, she'll be introducing you to our candidates. Our candidate for At-Large City of Houston, At-Large Position 1. Caroline?
Hi, my name is Caroline Gary. I'd like to introduce one of our city council candidates for At-Large 1. Thank you for being here this evening. I'd like to welcome Georgia Provost.
Thank you.
Georgia is a community activist who has participated in the cultural, educational, humanitarian, political, religious, and spiritual sectors of Houston for many years. Pardon. She is a photographer and owns Provost &amp; Associates at professional photography studio. Georgia is also a motivational speaker. Georgia has been honored with numerous awards, including 6 Living Legend Awards, 15 Business Women of the Year Awards, and 12 Youth Leadership Awards. She has served on the boards of the Houston Urban League, YMCA, Julia C. Hester House, and the Bayou Bend Tennis Classic. Presently, she serves on the boards of the Bayou Bend Academy and the Youth Freedom Institute. She also served on the Harris County Appraisal District Review Board for six years. A native of Lafayette, Louisiana, Provost was married to the late Herbert J. Provost, and they have one son, Jerome Kevin Provost. She is an active member of the Our Mother of Mercy Parish, serving as coordinator of the Civil Rights Education Classes, president of PICC, and a member of the Pastoral Council. Georgia is a proud graduate of Texas Southern University, where she received her Bachelor's of Science and Technology. She was inducted into the Wall of Honors at the TSU School of Technology. She received her high school diploma from Charles R. Drew High School. She has pursued advanced studies at the University of Houston, Rice University, and is a graduate of the Wynona National School of Professional Photography. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Sure.
Well, Ms. Provost, we're just gonna go ahead and go through some questions, so you can let the public know about what's going on and your plans as a city council member.
Yes, ma'am.
So our first question focuses on Houston diversity. You know, Houston is the most diverse city. What do you see as the value in our diversity? And what would you do to capitalize on that distinction?
Well, first of all, I do know it is a diverse city, and Houston speaks 147 different languages, and we diverse. The problem is, we too divided. We all need to come together as a family and figure out how we gonna clean Houston up, how we gonna make this city number one in the nation, not number three. And the only way we can do that is we come together as a family. My thing is, we need to stop all this quarreling. We need to eliminate religious denominations, forget your party affiliation, and forget race, and let's all of us get together and figure out how we gonna make this city, how far we gonna clean it up, and how we gonna make this the best city. You got people in different races, backgrounds, even with the different parties. They all got skills and talent. Let's use those skills and talents together. Let's all of us get in a room and figure out how we gonna make this city, and how we gonna get ourselves out of this debt without having to increase the taxes.
All right. Our next question is sort of related, but the question is, what are three primary quality of life indicators that you would use as a metric to develop policy around and serve your constituents? So, three primary quality of life indicators.
Quality of life. I think we should be able to live in a city where there's no crime. Air pollution is another one. Get these folks some jobs. I got a laundry list of things that, you know, I can give you more than three, but you ask me for three.
Sure. So, those are great ones. So, the jobs, especially specifically, I know that's been on people's minds with the current economy. So, what are some sort of plans that you might do to develop policy around those three ideas? The air pollution, all of the things that you've mentioned. Is there anything in specific that you would love to initiate if you serve us for At-Large 1?
One thing I would like to do, let's start with the crime. I know that crime is because of poverty, lack of education, unemployment, out-of-control children, and unprepared parents. That's your problem. So, what we need to do is come up, first of all, you got 32 law enforcement agencies in the city. Get with them, get with the leaders, and they get in a room together and figure out how they gonna eliminate this. We got too much divided. You got the constable over here, this one over here, East Hospital got their own, East College got their own. Come in a room together, and let's plan and see how we gonna fix this. One thing I know, and I noticed, we got crime and green print in different places. They need to put the Crime Reduction Unit in the community. It's 62 people. And that consists of, you know, they might have on a center print uniform, or some might act like they prostitutes or whatever. These are police officers. It's called a Crime Reduction Unit. Put them in there for a certain period of time, and when they leave, put another set there. Because the crooks know when they leave, so they start their activities again. But come back and send that 62 different ones. That's the thing, too. Also, I like community policing, that's for crime. I mean, you know. And Bike Patrol. One thing I do know for sure that will work, police officers in those areas should be able to go have lunch at the schools with the kids. You'd be surprised what they'll know. And I'm gonna give you an example. For the 12 years my child was in school, I had police officers in Third Ward to come eat lunch with the kids at Lockhart Elementary, Ryan Middle School, and Yates. We didn't have no burglars or nothing. The only thing we had crime was these kids going downtown shoplifting. So, we had courts for that and showed them what to do. These students know what's going on. Form your relationship with them. They'll tell you where the crack house, the dope dealers, whatever they do, they know. So, that's the problem. And jobs. You got to get these folks working. I propose to have regular job fairs. Now, right now, you know, you see all these fellows under the trees, and I'm going up under there telling them, "Did you finish high school?" "Oh, no, Ms. P." I say, "Well, what grade did you go to? 10th?" "Okay, here's a card. I want you to go on Holman Street and get your GED and come back to me. We gonna find you a job." And nobody need to be sitting in no tree at 10 o'clock. Y'all need to be working. Other one, I say, "What kind of skills do you have?" "Okay, Texas Southern got a program that you can go and enroll in. The refineries need welders, they need maintenance, and they need swarf lifters." I find a company that can teach you to weld. I got my resources. And then, it's just so much that we can do as a community if we all come together.
That's great. Thank you for elaborating on that. Appreciate it.
So, Houston has been ranked the 15 worst major city in terms of income inequality. What are your plans to bridge the gap that's caused by that fact?
Well, I was doing some research. I don't think the city can, maybe they can, I haven't got the research, where they can increase minimum wage. And I think this company might have to come from the legislature in Austin. So, I'm gonna have some Come to Jesus meeting with them, because 2016, they ain't gonna be doing anything. So, I'm gonna take my laundry list with them. People cannot live off of $7 dollars in some sense. They can hardly live off of $15. So, we need to be realistic. These companies are making, if you look at, they're making billions and billions of dollars. Share. You wouldn't make that kind of money if you didn't have the kind of employees you have. So, treat them right. You know, I see one company that's gonna, OH, HEB, gonna let them own part of the company. You know, give them some incentive. Maybe, I think so. I think it's a good idea. I'm gonna be fighting for some wage, because I'm self-employed. My business is 67 years old. I'm in the photography business. I sell a luxury product that nobody needs. So, you know I gotta be a good salesman. So, I'm gonna try to sell that to them. If people are working, making a good, some people work two and three jobs trying to make it, and that's impossible. And they don't have time to really be with their family. They don't have time to even enjoy it. So, if we gonna be a city, and moving up to be the number-one city, and get all this negativity out of our face, we got to pull everybody else up. When you get up there, like my father used to say, "Go pull somebody up." Now, this is what Frenchman say. We from Louisiana, this is how we do. And then, these kids need to learn how to do something. My father worked at Humble Hall, but my father had five businesses. And the reason he said he had those businesses, because number one, he wanted his children to have some skills. Number two, he wanted us to have some work ethics. So, we learned how to pull motors out of car, we learned how to, he did a nightclub, we learned how to do everything. I know how to fix a light, I know how to put a roof on a house, I know how to do all that. He wanted his kids to have some skills and not be wanting somebody to do something for him. And I think this is the approach we need to, you know, we need to get. Yes, I am willing to fight for them to get a better wage.
Thank you for that.
That's one of my missions.
Thank you.
That's great. And that's actually really interesting. You already sort of naturally answered our next question, which was whether you support raising the minimum wage. I think it's very clear that you do. So, I'm gonna go ahead to the question after that, which is unrelated. It's directly related to the city and the money there. What effect do you think, positive or negative, the revenue cap is currently having on the city? And what is your stance on whether or not to lift or modify it?
Well, you know, the first thing need to happen at the city is they need to get an auditor, and let them audit each department. And they gonna find out that you got duplication, waste of money. And my city council member, when I first moved to Houston, was Homer Ford. And I used to hear him tell Mr. Provost all the time, "If they just go in there and audit, they gonna find some hidden money." So, this is what I'm seeing. Before you start taxing, I don't want to increase taxes. We gotta figure out a solution for that. But I don't want them to raise taxes. So, I call, I have a friend that was in administration with Governor Bush. He's my friend, and then another attorney. We're gonna have a conference call on Sunday, and I want them to tell me, "How can we increase revenue in the city, help pay off the debt without increasing taxes?" That's what I wanna see.
Great.
All right. Well, so now, we're gonna move, we're gonna shift a little bit. So, Houston has a vibrant theater and museum district, but many have criticized the city for not doing enough to support the small arts organizations and these independent artists. If elected, what would you do to ensure that we have a well-rounded, thriving arts community?
Well, it's funny you would ask that, because that's another thing. Because we have a museum, we have art at my university. We also have, gonna be using Deluxe Theater that they just redone on Lyons Avenue. So, I'm gonna be the cheerleader for that. Because the more cultural things we have, the more enhance our city, and it gives the students and the kids more to be able to go to. So, yes, I'll be that cheerleader.
So, I guess to talk a little bit, because I know it's, what do you think, how do you think you can, any policies or anything you're gonna be doing to help just ensure that those smaller theaters?
Well, they make city audits for everything, they can make city audits for that. You know, you gotta, I know I can't do all of everything that I want done, because I'm just one person. But I do know that you have to form relationships, and it's gonna be 15 other folks, and that's my specialty, forming relationships. And I'm gonna have my data and my facts before I go report you to do what I think need to be done. And if you, I don't understand, when you say no, I don't understand in no way, so I'm gonna still be talking about it. So, what I'm saying is, yes, like I said before, they make city audits for everything else, let's make one for it.
It might be interesting, too, just related to this question about the theater and museum districts, making, you know, ways to make sure that as we move forward, the new arts and cultural plan, how might you ensure that the smaller places have a voice in that? I know this year's been a really big year for the general plan and talking to stakeholders about the arts and culture plan, and it would be interesting to hear how your view is on whether they have an equal voice at the table moving forward as they finalize this plan.
The only thing I'm really concerned about, when you decide that you wanna do all this art and that, I'm just hoping that you include us. You know, we got three, was it one, two, three? Well, four with Texas Southern Museum and Arts. So, when you planning all of this for downtown, plan some in our community. It's simple. And don't give us the crumbs. When you want big bucks for them, put big bucks for us. And if you don't know where those located, I'll draw you a map, so that you can find out how to get there.
That's great. Thank you for your thoughts on that. This next question again is, we're shifting direction, so just to get you mentally prepared. It's about schools, our schools. What are your plans to address issues like overcrowding and underperformance in Houston schools?
Well, first of all, I'm gonna form a relationship with the schools, with the school district. I have a problem with HISD. Back in February of last year, I formed the Black and Brown Coalition, and I registered a complaint with HISD with Eric Holden, Secretary of Education, President Obama. Opportunities for education is five entities. Because the black and brown students in HISD are being used as, only for marketing tools, for contracts. I'm an educator. I taught at HISD. They are not teaching. And what really got me and got me to wanna file this, they closed all my schools in my neighborhood. Then you come back around, and you fire almost 900 experienced black and brown teachers, and you bring in Teach America. Number one, they don't know our culture. They don't know the culture of black and browns. Number two, they live long enough to teach us in the first place. They don't know our culture. And they don't have the patience. We had all of these teachers, them 900 that they got rid of, had the patience to teach these kids. Some teachers would go home to make sure that the kids. I know when I was in school, you do, teacher was there, she was at your home. We don't have that anymore. So, all I'm saying is that the school system is a big business. It ain't about teaching and learning no more, it's about how many dollars they gonna make. And I had written, emailed Obama, President Obama, asking them to get rid of Ernie Duncan, so far that he resigned. There's few public schools in New Orleans, Los Angeles, Philadelphia. Charter schools might be good, but to me, it's a form of segregation. We went to public schools, and we didn't do bad at all. So, all I want you to do, you close almost, what, 50, 60 schools, when you close a school in a neighborhood, you kill the neighborhood. So, to me, it's by design, and I'm really not, and I'm still not pleased, and I'm still gonna fight. We should have neighborhood schools. When I first moved on Bayou, my husband and I used to run the Bayou, and he would get so upset, then bust his pass at 5:30 and 6:00 o'clock. And he said, "They busting our brain kids out of our community." When I was PTA president at Yates, we had 3,000 students, was doing good. What they do, they take all the programs that the black and brown students want and put them across town, then they gotta go across town. It's by design. And you get people on the school board that go with the okie dokie, go with the plan. So, I said, "Well, maybe they getting paid." If we don't get the school system right, we don't start teaching these kids like we supposed to, you gonna have more dropouts and more crime, and I don't want that. So, I'm gonna work real close, we got some new board members, I'm gonna work real close with the school districts. Now, I don't see too many problems with the other school districts, it's just Houston school district. They need to get rid of the superintendent. This man have been a five, well, four or five schools superintendent, and if you look at the record, all of them put the sign up, "Get Greer out of here." So, what we got him down here for? I mean, and what really got me, Yates is a historical school. Next February, be 90 years old. This man wanna tear it out of my school and build us a little old school. So, what you do, you send all these non-qualified. Why would you wanna send a elementary principal, a middle school principal to a historically black school? And what really ticked me off is when he sent a man by the name of Coleman to be the principal. This man had no experience, but he was his special ed director when he was in San Diego. You gonna make it, so you killing my school, you doing it deliberately. And I don't know why people are not outraged in the community about this. They wanna tear Yates down and build a little small school. You can't do that. And I about had enough. I really have. You gonna stop treating us like we don't even exist. You gonna give us some respect? I'm not but one person. And I like a good fight.
Well, thank you. Yes. Well, we're about to switch gears. I was, I look, I know, I know, look.
I'm ready for you.
Good, good, good. Appreciate your candidness, too. So, look, we'll go to the next question. When candidates speak about crime prevention, they often propose a formula of more cops equals less crime. And when in reality, the systemic causes of crime are linked to issues of education, poverty, and opportunity. What crime intervention and prevention policies do you support that will systemically address crime?
Well, as I said when you first talked to them, I told you what caused crime. All they got to do is we gotta keep these kids in school, but you gotta make school conducive for them. You gotta make them wanna get up in the morning at 5:00 o'clock, run to school, like we used to do. You got to make it like that, but now, the kids don't even wanna go to school. And, you know, they talk about, "We don't have enough policemen." Well, one thing we can do, they talking about policemen, and we can't do without them. We can't do without policemen, because otherwise, we gonna have Jesse James around here. But you got all of these policemen that's sitting behind the desk that been trained. Put them on the street, get you some civilians to answer the phone and do the bookwork. And I think I said before, I attended the Police Academy for five years, because when I get to speaking about something, I wanna know what I'm talking about. And I tell these young kids, "Oh, Ms. P, I got rights." I say, "But the police got rights, and he got authority on his hip." And I tell this story all the time. My son must rather for the police to stop him than him to come home to his mother and daddy, because what he gonna get? So, we gotta stop talking about the police, because if you didn't have police, we would have Jesse James back in the old west time. What need to happen is the leaders in our community need to go and have conferences with the policemen and talk to them. And then, the police need to be trained for the culture that they represent, whatever they serve. The question we should ask is, "How do you recruit the police? What training do you give them before you send them to the black and brown community? Do they know anything about the culture?" Think about it. So, that eliminates some of the problems right there. But don't ever think we don't need, I love me some policemen, I love me some firemen. They, number one, I like, number one, and I found out a couple of years ago, they don't even get Social Security. We do, we can retire on Social Security, it ain't much. But it's just so much that we can do, but we can't do anything if we bickering with each other. We need to sit down, we got plenty buildings, we got rice, we got TSU universities, we got all the conference rooms we need. Just get in there, and let's make a plan, five-year, 10-year plan. This is how we gonna do it. This is how we gonna treat Third Ward. If something, and see what turns people off with the police in my community. Let's say, Ms. Jones called the police and say, "Okay, there's a dope house across the street, they got prostitution over here, they gambling over here." So, the police will come, and they gonna come straight to Ms. Jones' house. They put Ms. Jones in jeopardy. Park your car two blocks and walk, knock on these door, till you get to Ms. Jones. I mean, some common sense things that they can do, but they go driving, they, five or six cars go to Ms. Jones' house. Ms. Jones scared to go to sleep, because the dope dealer gonna care, this one gonna, so you gotta use some common sense. And that's just simple.
Yeah, I think it's really interesting that a lot of what you've spoken about has been more around like education and training of our police force. And I would be interested to hear if you think, is there a hiring need? Is there a resources problem as well? Do you think it's more specifically around this training and education of how to work within a certain community? Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Well, I agree, we do need more police officers, and we need to figure out how we gonna get the money to pay them. But in our respect, they still need to be trained. If some, I just come out of my office, something happened on Wheeler Street today. If something happened in the black community, you would think that that's the police headquarters, because you got 15 and 20 cars out there. For somebody that might just had a flat or hit somebody, or maybe try to steal something, why you gotta have all these policemen out there? You scaring the people. And then, when you come, you're not pleasant, because you don't know our culture. So, I think it's time, if we plan to eliminate crime, the police officers and the community need to get together, and they need to talk. And I still believe, just like Alan Helfman said, have these policemen to go and have lunch in the inner-city schools with these kids, because they know where everything is. And the president of the Houston Creative Union, I mean, Police Creative Union, Mr. Hunt, said he pay for it. Plus, Alan Helfman allowed, we were raised, since we have a fundraising, we'll raise the money for them to go. And the kids know what going on, so just go, that's one step right there. And then, the police officers need to be more visible in our community. Just don't come when something happen. You can come to church with us on Sunday, we not gonna bite you. You can come to some of the night outs that we have, you can come to the function, be visible. Just don't come with 15 carloads, like you the big bad sheriff in town. Just come and, you got to get involved in your community. Wherever I go, I'm welcome. I'm welcome, because I know how to treat people. And I'm welcome wherever I go. And this is the way they should be. Don't wait, that's, let me leave this alone. Let me just leave that alone.
No, it's a great segue to our next question, actually. You're talking a lot about police and law enforcement relationships with communities. So, the next question is related in that it asks, "How can we improve law enforcement relationships with communities of color, which we've been speaking about, and the LGBT community?" So, both of those, we've talked a little bit about communities of color, and I'd like for you to just continue talking about that, and then also the LGBT community.
Well, first of all, I don't put no separation in the LBG and other folks. They're all human beings. God made us all. We all need to come together. And all the citizens want some respect. That's all we want. Just treat us like human beings. Don't treat us because we belong to this organization, don't because we black, because we brown. Just treat us just like we citizens, productive citizens. And don't be looking at people because they are black, or they Hispanic, or they white, well, white folks get it all, because they running everything. And because you belong to the LBG, we still are human beings, and we all need to just be together. You know, I have a lot of friends and young people that's with, what you say, LB, I always get it.
LGBT.
LGBT, that's at my house, they my friends. I treat them with respect. I don't care about, that's their problem. But you gonna be my friend, you come to my house, we gonna ride, we gonna have a good time. If I can help you, I'm gonna help you. And that's the way it should be. Don't be separating people, because that's, whatever they wanna do, that's their business. Leave, stay out of people's personal business. That's all I got to say. Stay out of their personal business, and then everything will be all right. Stop classifying people. We are all one, and until we come together as one on a city, big city, we gonna be number one. And we could be the model city for all the other cities. Just embrace each other, hug and kiss each other. You don't have to go in your pocket to be nice, and you don't have to take them home with you to be nice. That's all I'm saying. Just show some love. And I have a problem with people go to church every Sunday and don't know how to treat people. Don't know how to speak. I'm from Louisiana, I speak to everybody, whether you speak to me now, I'm gonna speak to you, "How you doing?", give you a hug. You don't wanna hug, that's fine with me. I want everybody that I meet to feel like they're somebody. That's my mission.
Earlier, you spoke about how law enforcement has sort of an obligation to be sensitive to the needs and the nuances of a different community. And do you feel, we were talking specifically about schools and about the law enforcement relationships with communities of color. Do you feel like that same level of training might be necessary for the LGBT community with the police enforcement needing to really understand who they're speaking with, to really get to know this community and how they're maybe different than someone else?
They need to, and they need to stop with all this negativity about them, and just treat them like... And just treat them like they do normal people, cuz they are people. They are our brothers and sisters, whether you wanna believe it or not. We all are brothers and sisters. And we all trying to make this city, and they need to have some training too for that. And they're serious, some serious training. I'm, I'm, I'm really tired of people always putting them out, oh, you gonna do this for the LGBT. They people, they us. Work with them, they don't ask you to do anything stupid. I, I don't think, none of them have asked me to do anything crazy, they just going by their business, whatever they do, and they do it good. They need training too, police officers need training. Only for culture and for that, uh, what's it again?
LGBT. You got it.
Great, that's great, thank you so much.
Alright, so, excuse me. We're gonna talk about, you, you just saying how Houston is such a large city, right? It's a big city. Let's talk a little bit about infrastructure. So, and a city as large as Houston, building and maintaining an infrastructure is a challenge. How do you think the city should tackle, tackle the infrastructure issues, including how to pay for it?
Well, you know, we should revisit, rebuild Houston. And demand that we get what we promised, was promised out of rebuild Houston. And then we should start with the worst neighborhoods for infrastructure, for flooding and drainage. Do you all know that 88% of the ditches are located in the black and brown community? Did you know that? So, it's simple. I, I was out in an area and the man said they had a sewage problem. Took the city two weeks to come and fix it. In each community, you have plumbers. Let those local plumbers do the job. Then you putting people to work. You got a problem on navigation? Get the local plumbers, you got a problem in Sunnyside, you got, let the local plumbers. Cuz whatever department is gonna do, this can't do it all. And like I said before, once you go back and get an auditor to audit all those departments, you'll see it as top heavy. And you'll find some hidden money to pay for some of this stuff. I'm not a CPA, but I know how to work with some figures. And when you a small business and a black owned business, you got to know how to work with some figures. You got to wonder if you gonna make enough to pay your light, your gas, and your people. And still have something to eat. So we, we, I don't have, I don't, I don't see where we gonna have a problem if they would do the right thing, start with the worst neighborhoods first and make them, those disadvantaged neighborhoods, and make them look like their affluent neighborhoods that we got in Houston. For example, Acres Home is 100 years old, 100 plus years old. How old is the Galleria? Look at the Galleria. First class, Acres Home, 100 plus years old. Something wrong with that picture.
Can you remind the viewers what rebuild Houston is for some that may not know, or?
Well, they were saying about the drainage fee, we know everybody know what it is, cuz people are asking for their money back and all of this. And for those people that's asking for your money back, don't ask for your money back, just tell them to credit your water bill. Credit your water bill. Simple as that. But that part of it, I got a little team that's researching and see how we can fix that. Because the infrastructure, flooding, draining, it's something. Look at those people in Meyer Land, look at them folks in Sunnyside, they had Meyer Land all over the TV, they flooded. But they ain't say nothing about them folks that got flooded in Sunnyside. And South Park. Our home, their homes was messed up too. So treat us all equal. That's all I'm saying. And when you do get your rebuild money, start with the worst neighborhoods. I counted about 55 neighborhoods that's from Acres Home, on navigation, fidelity, that don't, that are underserved by the city. Core services, no, that's unfair, that's not right. And I don't hear nobody speaking about it. End of my sermon.
Okay, I have a follow up, just, you know, as an at-large council member, if elective, if elected, you have an obligation to everyone in this city, which is, you know, really kind of overwhelming, but also really great, cuz you get to know every neighborhood, unlike maybe a district council member. And so, whenever it comes time for, you know, how, how each year the council members negotiate the capital improvement plan spend that each district gets. Tell me a little bit about how you might plan to understand the entire city and all of its needs worse first, like you've been talking about, and how you might work with each district council member to make sure that you are speaking for them if their district needs help. Is there, is there something that you have in mind? What would it look like to you to have a successful relationship with our district council members when negotiating capital improvement plan?
Well, I plan to have a good relationship, but I wanna give you an example. And this is on my list too. Kingwood, the city annex Kingwood. Mayor Boblinia said he was gonna get all the services just like the city. They didn't get it, next administration. Kingwood is sitting there, no services, didn't get nothing that Boblinia promised them. So I'm gonna be out there with them. We gonna get some service out there. And see what you have to do, I wanna be able to, be able to have a relationship with all the district council members. And I wanna be able to go, okay, you're the council member for Kingwood. Let's, and these are the needs and things, this, first of all, let's give them what you, what Mayor Boblinia promised them. Let's work on that first with, with Kingwood. And then whatever, then I go to the next council member. And see, this is the needs, I know you busy. And one thing that we might consider is redoing the charter. Mayor got a whole lot of power. This is a mural, mail, city, whole lot of power. For example, if a council member, district council member wanna get something on the agenda, the mayor decides she don't want it. So he can go the whole year without getting anything that he want done. Which make him look like, to his constituency, he's not doing his job. Well, he's, he wanna do his job, but he can't get the mayor to put it on the agenda. So, if we redo the charter, have somebody just get different leaders, they sit out and review the charter, rewrite it, and let the people vote on the new charter. Then you go eliminate the services. Because right now, the mayor can say she don't wanna put it on the agenda, and don't get on the agenda. And this is something, something that happened, cuz I, I watch City Hall, I can't go down there, but when I write my proposal, I can sit and watch them. And I'm saying, well, why they not saying this, cuz she's not on the agenda. Isn't that, and for example, the mayor can put five people on the metro board. I haven't seen one person on the metro board that ride the bus. So we gotta start including. You talk about diversity, well, diversify that. And let's stop using the word diversity when it's in your advantage, and you don't still don't do nothing. This, this city is made up of all type of people, so you gotta be diverse in all the departments, diverse in the bus, diverse in everything. Just don't handpick your people that you want. And we need to stop handpicking people because they are friends. Your friends don't have the skills and the talent, then you need to tell them to go run basket weaving. You know, this is serious time right now. This is serious time right now. Security, they talking about, what they talking about doing, even with Missouri happened. They talking about targeting Harvard University, now they talking about coming to Washington and New York. So, we got things that outside forces, let's get our house clean first, so we can be the model city.
So, yeah, speaking of being a model city, you know, Houston is poised to surpass Chicago very soon in terms of population, so we're a very big city. And you mentioned metro earlier, and I kind of want you to think more broadly about what is your vision for public transportation in Houston as we continue to see more population, possibly more density? What's your vision for public transportation?
Well, we need to, I like the rail. The only problem I have with the rail is that we didn't get any contracts, the black and brown, to do the rail. We didn't get no contract to build the five, the five stadiums that we had, we probably, probably we gonna get 25%. But something has to be done with this traffic. I needed to go way out, I can't even think of the street now, it just took me almost two hours. It's a good thing I left early. Something has to be done about the traffic. Now, when, whoever can figure out what we gonna do with this traffic to get it running, they gonna be a genius and they gonna make plenty money. Cuz it's a serious problem. The rail is fine. The problem I have with the rail is that it, it knocks a lot of these small businesses out of business. You go down in, I think, was it Harrow Bird or Navigation where the train is? Most of those businesses, small business, either had to close and, and construction, it was hard to get to them. Even when they came down Scott Street, it's hard to get to them. So they need to come up with a better plan, and one more thing I wanna say. They need to get a better plan when they get ready to repair streets. Don't repair this street and four streets down, you repaired another one. Plan it out, you know, maybe do something here, do something, then come back. But don't top the whole area. And I like that train they gonna do from Houston to Dallas.
I was just gonna ask you about other, like, we've, we know about the rail. We've got this sort of high-speed train between Houston and Dallas. You know, there have been ideas around, you know, sort of this bus rapid transit type thing that may be potentially more feasible in some ways than rail. What do you think about some of these alternative ways of moving people around town on our roadways that might include these sort of high-speed buses?
I don't have a problem with that, I just know we need a solution. I'm serious, I don't have a problem. And I got a little, I got some young folks, I believe in my young people. And I got some older folks with the wisdom. And I say, okay, y'all come up with a plan with this traffic. Y'all gonna keep me, we gonna do it. And I don't want you to be all that, in the next 10 days, I want y'all to come up with something. Something got to deal with this traffic. And then, one thing I need to say to the, to the people that's on the highway, get up early and leave early. Then you won't have to be cussing folks out, blowing at them, having an attitude. And ladies, put your makeup and all your stuff on before you get in your car to go travel. Just common sense things. And if somebody give you a signal and they wanna get in the lane that you in, slow down, let them in the lane, courteous. When I got my license, they used to teach courtesy. That's what they used to say, courtesy. And I've been driving since I was 12, I was, at 12 years old, I was driving to Houston with no license to get my daddy's oxygen on lines avenue. So, once we can figure out the traffic, we spent our time, wasting our time on stuff we don't need to be wasting on. Metro need to be figuring out what can they do to eliminate traffic instead of cutting the bus services out with the black and brown folks. You got people now gotta catch three and four buses before they go to work. That's, that's, that's crazy. So, but if you had somebody on metro board that ride the bus, maybe they can educate them. But seriously, this, we gotta do something about this traffic. We gotta do something about the traffic, we gotta do something about this flooding. It floods on 288 every time it rain. It don't take a rocket scientist for y'all to figure out what to do with it. Just talking about it ain't gonna get it. We need to, we talk too much, that's our problem. We have too many meetings, form too many committees, and they don't do nothing. Figure out how we gonna stop this flooding. And I understand that they didn't even put the floodgates down, and the city lost over, what, 90 cars? Somebody ain't doing their job. And people need to be accountable. That's all I'm saying. And if we all work together, we can get this done. And stop worrying about whether you Baptist, Catholic, Republican, Democrat, LB, what you say? LGBT, and black and white and brown. Forget all that, and let's get this city straightened up. Because guess what? We only have 400 and some days before thousand and thousand of people gonna be in our city. February 2017 gonna be the Super Bowl. I don't want them folks to come here, and we still got crime problem, we still got flooding problems. So we better get, we don't have that much time. And we need to stop arguing and fussing with each other and criticize it, and let's make a plan how we gonna get this done.
Okay. I know you talked about, a little bit about changing the charter. You were saying that there's something that you wanna look into about the mayor's government, their strong, strong governmental power. So, in the meantime, that hasn't changed. So if you're elected to city council, how do you plan to affect change, knowing that this limitation is in place?
Well, you know, I plan to, I'm gonna win this. So I plan to, to meet with all the city council people. Just sit out and have a meeting with them. And let them know that where I'm coming from, in my experience of being out here in this community, trying to run a business, a small business. And I'm gonna show them up now, this is what need to be done, can we work together? Can we get this done, can we solve this? Because all my life, I have worked to get people together with no division. And I've been pretty good at it. We might not get the charter changed, but we keep it on their mind. And we gonna be like the commercial on TV, the more you hear that commercial, the more you wanna go buy it. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. I'm not saying I'm gonna be able to make all these changes, but I'm going down there to really to work with city council and the mayor to see what we can do to improve the city. That's my mission.
That's great. So, unfunded pension liability is a major issue for the city of Houston. What are your ideas about how to address the current pension issues and how to prevent similar situations in the future?
Well, the firefighters pension is controlled by the state. And when I went to talk to them in 2013 when I was running, they informed me that the mayor's paid a lobbyist $1 million to go to see what they can do to dismantle their pension plan. So if you got a million dollars that you gonna pay a lobbyist, take that million dollars and invest it and put that back in their pension plan. That make sense? And then you got the employees and the police, I understand the police got theirs just about like they wanted. But still and all, rather than just having the city council and the mayor make the decision, bring the, bring the, the police and the employees to the table. Let them have their mediator and their lawyer, whatever, and y'all sit down and work out a plan. That's all. Like I said before, I don't think citizens know that the firefighters and the police do not get social security. And that should be our first priority as a city, is to figure out how we gonna get, whatever we gonna get for them for their pension, and make sure it's what they want and satisfy them. Cuz like I said before, if they strike, we in worlds of trouble. So work with them, let's start to get, everybody coming up with some idea, talking about, invest eight, put them in a 401K and do that, did you ask the police officers and employees what they want? Ask them, they'll tell you, and maybe y'all can sit down and negotiate it. And get the state, state, or your elected officials to get involved in it. Get governor, have it, all of them together, and let's work it out. They don't make that kind of money, that's why they take these extra job policemen. So let's fix it where the policeman can get paid comfortably, still have a pension, because we need them. And everybody needs to get behind the bandwagon for those two, firefighters and the police. It's mandatory that we have them. Even if we clean up the city, we still gonna need them. We don't know when the fire come, we don't know what gangs gonna try to come to town to do some damage. So let's sit down at the table and work it out, that's all I'm saying. And that need to be the first thing we need to do, other than trying to get the budget right.
Alright. Caroline, I think you should take that last question.
Sure, so, the last question, there's actually two really great ones on here, but you've spoken a lot already about sort of our economic and income inequality and the segregation there. So I'm gonna ask you our final one, the Houston-era metroplex. So Houston, Sugar Land, Baytown is an economic powerhouse. And really though, much of this economic development from major corporations is actually taking place outside of the city limits. So examples might include the new ExxonMobil campus in the Woodlands. So just places establishing their corporations in the Woodlands or in Sugar Land as opposed to in Houston. What policies can the city of Houston introduce that would make the city of Houston more attractive than our metroplex neighbors to new or relocating companies to bring them into Houston?
Well, I've been thinking about that ever since I read that grocery supply was gonna leave my area. They've been there since I came to Houston. We gotta come up with something, some kind of incentive, first of all, the, the, let me see what it is, it's the, when you get ready to build permits and stuff like that. That need to be examined. A company wanna build something, it might take the city two and three weeks or three weeks, and they gotta go through so much hassle to get a permit. and they gotta go through so much hassle to get a permit or whatever they need to build. That need to be taken out. And we need to be a much better, friendly city to those. And if those companies are leaving out of Houston, that should wake us up right quick. So, while, go talk to them, ask them why they leaving. Just have a conversation. They'll tell you why they leaving. It's something probably the city is doing so you make that correction. Just don't let them folks leave. You go out there and talk to them. And the companies that you do have here, go talk to them now so they won't be talking about leaving. I mean, it's just, it don't take a genius to do that. And I really hurt to see grocery supply leave. That's a good tax base. And if you, and maybe that's, maybe that's something the, at-large city council people can do. Because they really don't have anything specific like the district council members. So, maybe that's what we need to be doing as, at large. Just go to these corporations that's right there, see if they're pleased, listen to what they got to say, then we can come back and do what we need to do. We might need to change some city orders. We might need to give them an incentive. We might need to do something. But let's find out what it is. And go talk to grocery supplier. Go talk to those companies you just said. And ask them, why are you leaving my city? The fourth largest city? And we gonna be the third largest city? We aiming to be the first largest city? So, why are you leaving? Have those conversations. And that would be something great for the district council members to do. They can be the ambassadors for that. Simple, common sense.
Well, Ms. Georgia Provost.
One more thing I want to say too. I didn't mention it. Affordable housing. We need to have some affordable housing for homeowners and some rentals. They talking about giving the police, if they live in the neighborhood, give them an incentive. Stop building all these four and $500,000 houses and build some affordable houses. And you have to worry about the firemen and the police. They gonna move back here. They can't, they can't even live downtown. They don't make that kind of money. So, you don't, when you build those things downtown and the rent is high, you not even thinking about your firefighters and your policemen. But you want to criticize them because they living out of town. Fix up downtown. They don't have to go, they can walk to work then. Make something affordable for them. You don't have to put them back in the community. And you can't tell people where to live. So, you building all them high-rise? Build something that's affordable for the firefighters, for the police, or whatever. Then they'll move all back to Houston.
So, Ms. Provost, we want to give you the last word. You're running for at-large position one. And so, we want you to look to the camera, talk to the viewers, and tell them why they should elect you as their next at-large one council member.
Well, my name is Georgia Provost. And as I said, I am a candidate for city council at-large position one. Houston has real problems, need real solutions. And Georgia Provost is the real person for city council at-large position one. I thank you all for interviewing me. I love you. And ain't nothing you can do about it.
Well, on behalf of the League of Women Voters and Houston Media Source, we'd like to thank you for tuning in to our conversation with the candidates. We'd like to make a note that both candidates in the runoff were invited to participate. And Ms. Georgia Provost was, she came to our invitation. She accepted our invitation and was here tonight, this evening. So, what we want to just make sure that, let everyone know that early voting begins on December 2nd and ends December 8th, with Election Day happening on December the 12th. If you want to have, find out any information about the candidates, you can go to Houston.Vote, or you can go to vote411.org so you can find out about candidates and about the ballots. And on behalf of, again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, Houston Education Fund, and Houston Media Source, we'd like to say thank you and good night.